Oh, please. I'm not even like, you know, it's like.
Doing it.
It's laughing.
The cultural times are looking up next.
He's got it. He's got it now, I think. We'll already get a point.
Oh, he does, okay. You get the cinnamon teal?
Yep, he got it. He got it big and bold, this is the, it's pride.
Right here, I mean.
Really?
And they're rare out there.
Oh, you got one?
Yeah. The entire trip, so it's like, make a break, you know?
Yeah.
You don't want to make that whole trip again.
Right. Yeah, I was, yeah, I followed him by his friends, he was talking.
It was awesome, I was starting a conversation, I hit fuck.
He's just going on, telling me everything he's doing, like, no way.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, my lord.
That's awesome.
This is what we're supposed to be.
Yeah, tell me, like, they got the podcast, it's all over here now, and, uh, how, how it does, and how it really, it's pretty awesome. He said June, we have a couple weeks, I was telling him about it, I'm like, you gotta talk.
You have to tell us.
We can tell about the old.
I don't see that.
Yeah.
But yeah. I'm so sorry I missed that.
No, I took it.
You were so loud.
What we didn't want to do is adjust the zoning to then allow commercial uses to come in. So, one of the recommendations you'll see in green was to go to a minimum of a 10-acre parcel, so that that would limit the potential for the commercial, conversion of commercial that's already M1, M2. So, that was one of the recommendations that we kind of developed through thinking about this. So, that's kind of a little bit of a background of how we got here. And then I also know that the mayor is interested in assisting and like, supporting the planning commission in making decisions and making a recommendation eventually to council on this. And the next step would be discussion and decision on how the planning commission would like to move forward. And then that would be a recommendation to council. And then council would then have to agree or make adjustments to the proposed language and then go through the entire zoning ordinance amendment process, which there is a formal procedures. But this is where the public hearing is held first. And then the recommendation comes from the planning commission and goes to council.
Thank you. Questions for Arthur?
If we do the restriction of a 10-acre parcel, is that the assumption that that would not be divided up by five people then? And split into smaller, some commercial property would have to take all 10 acres and develop it at one time?
Well, right now, we're looking at what would be M industrial parcels. And there's a requirement that it would be along, along main roads within the, within the city. So, you're really, what we're, what we're thinking that this would accomplish would be limit that, limit that split to create smaller parcels along Fort Street, along, along, along the frontage, along...
You could have stores and stuff in front.
Right, right. In Gibraltar, you would have stores in front. And then there's also a discussion for the planning commission. We'd recommended 400 feet potentially deep commercial because mid-size box retail is going to be at least 200 feet deep. So, we were suggesting 400, but it would be up to you all to say, no, we want 200, or we think 300, or maybe get us a little bit more specifics. But less than 200 would not seem to be a reasonable decision because of the layout of, of smaller retail. But if you want mid-size retail, you're probably going to be over 200 feet and going towards 400. So, that's how we kind of came up with that number, that recommendation.
Did you have something, Woody? Did you have something?
Well, I'm, I'm kind of going along with the first one because, I'll tell you what, if you don't get any people in here, any businesses or manufacturing, I don't know what's going to happen with the taxes here and the water bill. I mean, we're paying through the nose now.
So, you're looking at number two then with the option?
Well, number one, I, number one.
Without the commercial?
Yeah. And no RV park.
Well, I think the commercial is important.
Well, if you get M1, you can get like businesses in there like, uh...
Right.
Like all the delivery people, you know, like a warehouse or something. They'll be open during the day and that's it, you know? We need something to, to back our tax base up.
Well, that's not the only thing that's allowed in the M1 zoning though, not just warehouses and things like that. There are other businesses that are allowed as long as they don't create toxic chemicals or things like that. They might manufacture products that have already been made somewhere else and just need to be refinished or something like that.
Sand built.
Right, exactly. But my thing is, I like the PUD because it includes more efficient site design and preservation of our amenities. To me, the RV park doesn't have any benefit for our city.
Well, the PUD is expired.
Right, but...
And it's not on the...
It's not on here, and can I ask why it's not?
Um, it partly in the discussion at the beginning about the fact that we've determined that the PUD is, is void. It was never perfected and that what's underlying is M3. And there is no way that the developer, that the property owner could perfect the PUD. And we're basically...
Well, I don't understand that because the PUD would allow for lower cost for our roads and the municipalities and things like that.
A PUD is a plan unit development which has very strict requirements for that. And that PUD has expired. It was never completed.
I thought the site plan itself expired, not the actual zoning.
The PUD, the PUD approval expired.
Or the site plan.
For, correct. And part of the zoning, part of the zoning ordinance says that the, the planning commi, or the council should rezone it at that point, which would rezone it back to M3 unless there was a reasonable decision that that was not appropriate. And that's kind of ties into the master plan. But currently, the developer is not able to perfect the PUD. It's expired.
I think a couple of things to, to note for the property at, kind of in discussion is that there's a current, I'll call it like an EPA study going on for the, the property because of the adjacent Superfund site. There's considerations in conversation from Eagle in reference to the, to the site at hand as well. I think a couple of things to consider that you guys have mentioned is, commercial frontage allows for tax revenue, right? So does M1 and M2. So, I think one pro to option two, I'm in agreement. I think general feedback that we've gotten through letters and conversation around the community is that most folks are not in favor of the RV park. I, I personally agree with that. However, I do think there's an opportunity to consider the M1, M2 with some commercial frontage to be defined by us, could be 200 feet, which would allow for, you know, smaller shops, things like that, fast food. I don't know, things that might make it easier in the community while also providing some revenue for the city. The cool part is, it says option. So, if they want to do light manufacturing and not use the commercial frontage, then they wouldn't have to. So, therefore, it opens up the opportunity. So, I think that that one leaves some options on the table, but also limits kind of so much of the change that could take place. It's kind of like a meet in the middle kind of thing. And we could define the frontage and some more stipulations or guidelines to say, hey...
That would be the number two one.
That would be number two with...
The one that I have circled.
With more stipulations that would be defined here, you know, the frontage and things like that. I think less than 200 foot, Arthur's point is kind of like you can't really build anything. That would be tough, like a parking lot's like 200 feet, so.
I'd take either one or two.
I think number two.
I, I would agree. I would, I, I think we should reserve the commercial. I think it's potentially more aesthetic for the community as they drive up and down our main streets. We can, we can have some revenue. We could, we could have some services. And it sounds more pleasant than having light industrial on the, on the road frontage.
Yep.
I'm not completely opposed to the RV park. It would be long-term, my concern would be long-term, would they want to convert that into something else? Have we done the math on how much our taxes are actually going to go down or not go up? You know, has anybody done the math on how more manufacturing will help each citizen?
Yeah, I think we had some discussion. I didn't have answers on that and we couldn't get a holistic data point on that. I will tell you that I don't believe taxes ever, from my experience, go down. However, unfortunately, that'd be cool. Unfortunately, I don't believe that they go down. However, I don't know what the impact to incremental percentage increases might change if there's more industrial, to your point? Like, would it affect the residents less if there was more business? I don't know the answer to that. We'd probably have to...
It could bring in more revenue for like police and fire and...
Right. I believe it's a percentage based on the type of zoning.
But like you said before too, there's data, there's studies being done that we should probably wait on before we even go forward with making a decision.
I don't know that...
Is that correct or did I misunderstand?
I don't know that we, so the trick is, because the PUD is expired, I think we, as a commission, kind of owe it to the city and the owner of the property to make some sort of recommendation.
We have to do something.
Yes, and then the data points on tax and things like that, I think are, I agree, are important to get. I think that's something we would have to come back to. I don't know that we, we can't get that answer today.
And that all depends on what's negotiated. I mean, the council could give out tax rebates, you know, for four years, five years.
Totally depends on the type of business, if there's a tax abatement, opportunity, things of that nature. So, that one's kind of tough. I ask the same, similar.
But I mean, if we vote based on the fact we may be helping, someone thinks we may be helping the community in the future with their tax increases, I think we should really have dated, a data point to back that up. Because I don't think we saw any change with the steel plant. I don't think anyone saw any change to their taxes based on the steel plant reopening or opening.
And I don't know that we would. I don't know the tax laws.
Because they give them a tax break.
They did. I think they're all out of that though, at this point. I don't know that, I don't know that we would. We'd have to ask the assessor. I don't know the laws for that.
Because if anybody watched the council meeting, what, two weeks ago? Vince had a thing on the screen and I even asked a question about number five. Remember Vince? It was about the water, because of the water taxes. With commercial, you get more taxes coming into the city. We're going to need help here, man. I'm telling you.
Yeah, to be able to keep, that's another good point. So, to keep up with infrastructure and things of that nature, bringing in some sort of business, light manufacturing or street-side commercial, that will help. More business in the city means...
More tax dollars.
Need more cops, means more tax dollars, but it also means, you know, more people, which means we need more support from a police and fire perspective, infrastructure. Roads will be used more, things like that, right, over time? So, all things to consider.
Lots of money to make money.
That's exactly right. Um, who would we ask the, is it the tax assessor for data points on things like that? That's weird, that one's going, here, you want to use mine?
There's some things that you can make some assumptions on the type of use and what, you know, square footage use is, what's the taxable value with it? It could be a range of scenarios that you use. I will tell you though, generally, industrial is very good from a community standpoint as far as it's not using a lot of your municipal services. And depending on the use, sometimes I said, gee, it's almost like just taking money. It, if you have the right industrial use and so. So, it makes us, you know, if we made some assumptions about different types of, like warehousing, storage, those type of things, you know, what's becoming more and more attractive to sites like this are, you know, just Senator Camilleri was talking about an expansion of essentially cloud type of storage facilities. Then what they need are electricity and water, reliable electricity and water, something you have here. And, you know, they're looking at 50 acres sites at a minimum. There's interest for battery storage for electricity that seems to be out there and, you know, they talk about at the Trenton site. But the point of it is, these are all, a couple of very low intensity impact on your municipal services that could probably have tie, high tax yields. I say that, you can make assumptions on that. You just have to know what the mix of use is to come up with what the tax base is. But generally, my sense of it is, it's more favorable as long as, if there's an industrial use there that they don't eat up as much of your municipal services as other types of uses would.
And they don't really have a negative impact on the surrounding districts either.
Where, where we're talking about, it is somewhat isolated from the core residential areas of the city is, at least my assessment.
Main part of it, yeah. And the best thing is, is a straight site, a straight shot to 75.
Yeah.
Sure.
You have that and as well as, you know, the transmission lines from ITC running down 75 are in close proximity. So, there's, there's some, there's some assets out there that, you know, could be attractive to, you know, more of an industrial type of development. I don't know if I answered your question, but...
Yeah, that's good. More discussion from the team? As Arthur mentioned, the, the next step, if we could come to a potential, would be a recommendation to council on one of the decisions, if we feel we're comfortable with that.
I would make a motion to make a recommendation to city council to adopt.
I think before you, one thing to note is the footage could be defined if you...
Yep, I was going to make a suggestion for the council to adopt the new M1, M2 zoning with the option for commercial footage and suggest maybe 300 feet.
I second that motion.
And supported? All in favor, say aye. Let's do that again. You've been supported, all in favor, say aye.
My voice, aye.
That's number, number two only changing the footage, right?
To 300, that's correct.
Okay.
Did you get it, Katie? Any opposed?
I just, before it goes to city council, do you have what you need to, is there any changes that are going to be made with what you saw in the packet?
I can, let's, let's go through page by page, if, if you would, and just make sure we've got everything. So, we agree to the parcels of 10 and more. Leave that at 10 acres and more, which is on the second.
Number five on page two?
That we would then eliminate number D on section 44, 701. It's going to be on this.
It's not page three?
It's not, it's, it's in the, it's from in your packet, not what I gave out today, sorry.
Oh, sorry, scrolling. Got it. That's D, so that would be RV parks in accordance with special use approval.
Correct. So, that would be out. A lot of the rest is cleanup. We just suggested a 20-foot green belt around the commercial, that's section 44, 710, instead of the eight-foot green belt for industrial, feeling that they want to retain the attractiveness of the commercial strip people do seem to really like when they're driving in. That was why we recommended the 20-foot setback with a green belt, which has a double row of shrubs. Section article 12, no, 22 would be removed. And then article, the new article 22 would be general manufacturing.
I got lost.
Yeah, sorry. There we are. And then we get to the new article 22, which would be the new M2, which is the general manufacturing.
So, that we changed to M2.
And then in section 44, 849, which is at the end, the, this would be the language that would be deleted. That chapter would be removed. And then a new section 44, 1033, conditional rezonings. This is language that's required by the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act and we need to have it in. It is a interesting way to approve a zoning, a project that a community, that a developer wants and a community may want, but want to limit the side effects. So, we're required to provide this as an option. So, the developer would come forward and say, please rezone this property to C, to C1 use. I will only put a umbrella repair facility here at this location. I will give up every other use possible on this site because I'm agreeing to that. So, that is rezoning with conditions. It's a interesting way, the developer has to recommend their, their, provide their conditions and we're not allowed to negotiate under state law. So, we, it's an up or down vote and that would be a recommendation to council. But that we're required to have it and so we wanted, because we're doing this, we noticed we didn't have it, that we'd added in. So, that's, that new language there and that is it.
So, there'll be a little cleanup in the text here.
Correct.
And also the zoning map.
Correct.
Those will be the two things that will go forward to city council, the M1 and M2 district.
Correct, correct. Yeah, and because this is, this would cover more than three, because it covers more than 11 parcels, we didn't have to list out the parcels individually. So, that's why the zoning change is because of all the M parcels are being rezoned because of the new language.
Is all the taxes paid up on that property?
I don't know.
I can find out, give me the address.
Okie dokie. Any other? Okie dokie.
They go to sell, you'll find out.
Uh, we have no new business. We, Commissioner Forum?
Yeah, I have something. Maybe it's DDA, but not this one. It might be. The last administration, John, you'll probably remember because you were here with me, the ones that were here. On the middle Gibraltar Road, between Jefferson and North Gibraltar Road, the road is crumbling. Mailboxes are falling over, including mine. And the last administration was working on something. We were supposed to get letters, haven't received anything. Does anybody know what's going on?
I do not, but I think that's something we can probably follow.
Yeah, I could check and see if we got, I don't remember, I mean, the only thing I remember was discussion between Gibraltar and North. Oh, it's the north, okay.
Between Jefferson and North Gibraltar Road, right. By the school there and there's four colonial houses there. The, the road is crumbling and all of the mailboxes are like leaning into the ditches.
Okay. Yeah, I'll take a look at that.
Okie dokie. Anything else for Commissioner Forum? Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good evening, Commission. I'd like to call the Downtown Development Authority meeting in order. And since we've already opened this evening with our pledge of allegiance, Katie, can you please call, roll?
Shumay.
Here.
Baker. Bilk.
Here.
Hacks. Purzone. Hutchinson.
Here.
Andoza Back.
Here.
Payet. Huppelsher. Wood.
Here.
Commission, I'll be looking for a motion to excuse our absent members this evening.
Motion to excuse absent members.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This time, we'd love to open up to public comments for our Downtown Development Authority meeting. Any public comment for matters on the agenda or not on the agenda? Okay, this time, we'll close our public comment and move on to approval of this evening's agenda. Commission and members of public, you see the agenda in front of you and we looking for a motion to approve said agenda.
Motion to approve.
Do you have to make a motion to add the resolution to the agenda?
Perfect, so if Commission...
Make a motion to add the resolution to the agenda for the DDA today?
I support that motion.
We have a motion and supports, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, so that'll prove, that'll add to our agenda. On that note, Katie, where would you like that to live? Or Vince?
Could be item E for new business.
Fantastic, so we'll add that as item E for new business. Commission, in front of you and in your packets, you'll see our previous meeting minutes. Those are the DDA minutes, February 20th, 2024. We'd be looking for a motion to approve said meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Nice second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, Commission in front of you, under our acknowledgement of correspondence, you'll see item A, DDA budget as of 3/13/2024. Commission, we'd be looking for a motion to receive and file DDA budget as of 3/13/2024.
Motion to receive and file the DDA budget as 3/13/2024.
Fantastic, is there a second?
Support.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We do not have any unfinished business this evening, which will now bring us to our new business. Now, this new business, based on the motion earlier by the commission, has A through E. We'll start with A. I'll be representing this, this item in new business. Item A is bulletproof glass window and counter for our police department and dispatch. A little backdrop for the commission. When we took office as a new administration, one of our goals was to sit down with all of our city personnel. Obviously, that included members of dispatch, our officers, amongst everybody in the city operation. And one of the pieces of feedback amongst many that was shared in the debrief with Chief Tangway was dispatch had a strong desire to have bulletproof glass on the dispatch counter. Obviously, the, the number one focus is for safety. Since our building is open all day, every day, and since we have dispatch manning that counter, safety should be the critical focus for our city operation and their desire for that bulletproof glass. I had asked Chief Tangway to source quotes. In your packet in front of you, I want to thank Chief Tangway for sourcing said quotes. And I want to also thank dispatch for sharing that feedback for us and ensuring the safety of our dispatch personnel that are working very hard. So, you're going to see three, you're going to see the proposed action as shared by Chief Tangway, which would be the motion, if commission so chooses, to install a bulletproof glass window and counter and speaker into the dispatch center that will allow for observation in the city hall front counter. And you'll see in here that we received different estimates. Obviously, it's described in your packet more thoroughly per estimate, but chief has made the recommendation. And you'll see that it includes the other options they did not choose, but Lee's Glass is the only local vendor that we could find with references to do this work. And you'll see the quotes, pricing and descriptive information captured within your packet. So, we also, just as a side note, consulted our wonderful personnel in city hall at our main counter, asking if there was any appetite or desire for bulletproof glass in that location for which they said they felt okay with not pursuing bulletproof glass in that location for the sake of the resident interaction and the fact of the hours of operation being not 24/7. So just to be distinguishing for you all, the, the bulletproof glass request is for the dispatch counter, uh, the main City Hall counter for which residents come in each and every day, uh, eight to four, uh, is not going to have bulletproof glass. So just want to thank Chief Tangway, I want to thank our officers and our dispatch for, uh, sharing this desire. Um, I feel safety should come first, and we should be looking out for them in bulletproof glass, but obviously ensure their safety as they man that dispatch counter twenty-four hours.
Which one was the proposed that he? I see all three of them.
The chief is one.
Lee or something.
I'm gonna guess not.
Lee Glass, Lee Glass Company?
They're all from the same, but I don't know which one. There was like a seventy-eight fifty, a fourteen, a fifteen thousand, and then a.
Ten thousand.
Eleven thousand roughly.
I think they're all three that you want to approve, it's a little over thirty thousand, I think it is.
Oh, it's all three of these?
That's what I'm thinking it is.
What? No, I don't, uh.
That's crazy.
Totally different, I think.
No, that's right, they are different.
Yeah, these are different options.
I'm sorry.
Options are varying.
Or layer.
Say which option he.
Well, the layer of the glass is different.
But they didn't say which one he recommended.
Did you see the chief made a choice of these three?
Yeah, I'm looking to see specifics before we decide the exact quote, 'cause, uh, to, to the Commission's point, there are three different numbers here.
And one eighth quarter is the fourteen thousand. Eight inch block. And this one is if you're lucky.
On his cover sheet, he does have an invoice number.
Yep.
And that is the ten thousand dollar, ten thousand eight hundred.
Yep, so, so, uh, Commission, that is, Katie is spot on. So you're gonna see three different figures here, you'll see the ten thousand eight hundred, which is gonna be the first one in your packet. Then you're gonna see the fourteen thousand nine hundred eighty-seven fifty-five, and then you're gonna see the third option with just seventy-eight fifty. Uh, aligned with the, uh, proposed action from Chief Tangway and the associated, uh, number, uh, you'll see that that corresponds to the first estimate, which is ten thousand eight hundred. So we'd be looking for a motion for that ten thousand eight hundred. Uh, Chief Tangway had sourced, uh, di, options with different, obviously, description items that you see captured in the quotes more broadly.
So the top two, it looks like are bulletproof glass with speaker systems. One is more elaborate than the other, and then the last one is like Kevlar material.
You can duck.
That's a, yeah. Basically, that's what it is, yeah. It's attached to the bottom of the desk where you would like, yeah. Tuck and roll, kinda. It's probably not a good option, I'm just gonna be honest.
Was, was this in the original budget for twenty twenty-four, is this add-on, is, where's the funding coming from?
It did come up as a new item coming out of the personnel, so it came up originally in twenty twenty-three as we were debriefing. Uh, so, uh, we've consulted our finance director, Amy, and, uh, she feels we have the capacity to support this. I'm glad, we've, we've called people at the mic before, so I'm glad to call Chief Tangway if there's any questions, 'cause I don't want to misspeak on any information. But, uh, this should triangulate that we're talking about the ten thousand eight hundred option from Lee's with the rationale being, uh, described in your proposed action from Chief Tangway. But I'm glad to call him or any conditional motion, uh, to verify any information you requested. Or if there's any further questions or data, information you all would like, then we could obviously consider, uh, pushing this to the next meeting. I just, again, I think it's a, a sound, safe approach to protect our dispatch, who are doing wonderful things for our city each and every day, twenty-four hours a day.
It might be, go ahead. It might be good in the, as we go forward, when we have a potential cost that we consider that we show it as a, well, is there a way to show a draft line item in the budget so that you could see how it would affect?
Um, I asked our finance director where it would come from, she said capital improvements, looking at your DDA budget on the previous page.
And that makes sense.
Okay, so then we have.
It's a great question by the Chair, though, thank you, Katie. So it fall into the capital improvements, which resonates, given the structural aspect of that in our City Hall building.
Got it.
Should I, would you like me to call Chief for any clarifying questions?
So the second.
Plenty of money.
They just don't need these additional features, is that why he's requesting the ten thousand dollar, um, offering?
That would be my assumption, but let's, let's try and give him a call, honestly. I think it's important to have all this information answered by the expert. I, I am not an expert by any means in bulletproof glass, so let's make sure we get those answers.
We're doing a live call again.
And if he doesn't answer, we can make a, a, a motion to push it out to the next meeting and/or condition based on questions you may have.
He's on duty twenty.
Chief Tangway, I'm so sorry to bother you this evening at seven twenty-one, um, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you just fine.
Uh, we are here, and you are live on speaker, uh, at the Commission meeting. And, uh, there's just a couple of clarifying questions, as you are the resident expert here in the city. So, uh, we've talked through the three estimates, we've talked through your proposed action. Uh, the Commission was just wondering if the different estimates you have, ten thousand eight hundred versus, for example, fourteen thousand nine hundred eight, eighty-seven fifty-five, is that higher quote based on features that you don't need, therefore you're recommending the ten thousand eight hundred? Maybe any detail you can provide to the Commission would be helpful.
Absolutely, the ten thousand dollar quote is to kind of window in the brick walls directly across from City Hall. The higher quote would be to do the current front counter above and below. Uh, just the above and the additional cost was for the below. So we opted to go with the ten thousand dollar quote, we cut in a new window, which leads right into the dispatch.
Incredibly helpful, so, uh, that aligns, we, we had landed on your ten thousand eight hundred, but that's helpful clarity for the Commission on the why behind that recommendation. Commission, any other questions, all we have, Chief?
So that's not the, is that at the counter right there, or is that in the back?
Is that the counter?
No, the counter, the front counter.
Yeah, Chief, they're, they're, they're asking, is it at the dispatch counter or in the back?
So it would be on the brick wall directly across from the City Hall window, leads right into the dispatch center, we opt to go through there. We would close the dispatch counter and allow that to be, still be used when, uh, during the day when people feel safe. But, uh, we would, uh, probably, we would have a window and a ledge that leads right into dispatch. And that way, dispatch could see what's going on at City Hall, hear what's going on across the City Hall, and, uh.
So it'd be L.
Then we wouldn't have to go out in the hallway to actually talk to people, we could talk to them through the window. And if we felt safe, they could go in the hallway then.
I see.
Incredibly helpful.
Makes sense, yeah.
Understood.
Chief, I'm sorry to bother you this evening, uh, but thank you.
You're not at all.
Thank you for answering, and thank you for the clarity.
I don't think he's that sorry.
Sorry, I'm not sorry, actually, let me rephrase that.
Thank you for the clarification.
Uh, thank you for the clarification for the Commission, and, uh, the ball's in their court to consider action. Um, but we'll let you go now, have a good evening.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Great questions, helpful clarity. Um, any other questions from the Commission, concerns? If not, we'd be looking for a motion.
I would make a motion to go with the Chief's recommendation. It leaves the counter still very personal and gives the police department a choice. And of course, it provides a new view to, to this, to this, to the city.
And I'm all for funding the police.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion carried, uh, Commission, thank you for the action there, I think it's a great benefit to our City Hall, uh, in protecting our dispatch. At the end of the day, that should close out item A, and we'll move on to item B, uh, twenty twenty-four landscape maintenance proposal. Vince, do you want to represent that one?
Thank you, uh, yeah, we're, uh, annually, the, the city has solicited proposals. Last few years, I think there's been one contractor, landscape contractor, DJ's, DJ's landscaping has submitted proposals. There's four sites, uh, within the community for, uh, um, that, uh, provide for the service. And I did ask them to provide what the different numbers mean, there's a couple of applications that we didn't elect, and so I think the last item in there, so. Uh, in total, uh, the proposals come just a smidge under, uh, three thousand dollars, but I asked for approval for a not to exceed of thirty-two hundred dollars in the event if something happens, uh, you know, their application, uh, you know, at the discretion of, uh, I guess, the administrator.
So you're saying would not exceed?
Would, yeah, the overall, it wouldn't exceed thirty-two hundred dollars. Yeah, that's a not to exceed amount.
Does this come out of capital improvements also?
No, it's built into their operating budget.
That was part of the budget, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess, my only question was, was the grub, grub killing, uh, required every year where we could use it for more fertilizer, or, you know, weed and feed?
Well, that one I did, wasn't part of the discussion, uh, in selecting, uh, the, uh, the various, uh, applications that they have, uh, for that, certainly something to be considered in the future.
Well, I saw grub control on it. Yeah. I was just wondering about every year you should do it, or if you did, every other year. Yeah, you should.
I do it every year, I didn't do it at my, uh, other hu, my old house, and that didn't work out good. Uh, motion to approve the, give me one second, sorry.
DTA.
Lands, twenty twenty-four landscape maintenance proposal.
Is there a second?
For thirty-two hundred dollars.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, yeah.
Uh, I heard a second by Wood?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, uh, Vince, thank you for representing. Uh, then we have item C, purchase of dogway stations.
That was from Tammy.
I'm asking you to approve the bid for, um, Dogways Depot for four dogway stations, the total of nine ninety, ninety-six, a thousand dollars for four of them. Um, I've got bids for two other companies. This was the lowest, and when I called them and asked them what we could get for, for, they gave them to us for nine ninety-nine. This was the price. It was seventeen ninety-three for three of them. They, um, they look like the stations that are there, the trash waste and the benches that are at all of the corners in town. And then we have some that will be moved in other areas. So I'm asking you to approve that.
Who maintains those? I mean, who?
Pardon?
Who picks up and cleans them weekly, daily?
Our DPW.
The DPW does? And they do, go ahead. Go ahead. How many trash cans are there? 'Cause there's trash cans by almost every.
Right, there's four trash cans by all the benches that I am aware of.
Well, we just put, they just had new trash cans put in, the fifty-five gallon drum ones. So why have two trash cans next to each other, you know?
These aren't trash cans, they're dog waste depot collectors. They're small, they have trash bags for the dogs.
Yeah.
And they go in the cans.
I've seen them.
But then we got, we got other trash cans right next to the benches.
These are out away from the benches, they look like this, and they're out away. They're there now, and they're falling apart.
Well, I know, but we never had any big trash cans by them before. It's up to you.
There has been trash cans there before, there's always been cans and dog waste stations. They're falling apart, we're just asking to have them replaced.
Well, I make a motion to approve the purchase of the dog waste.
Thank you.
Do we have a second by the Commission?
I'll second it.
Second by Bilk?
This is for four stations?
Yes.
Thank you for, uh, sourcing the reduction in price. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I have a question, though, do you have to keep filling the bags? Like, do you have to keep replacing?
Yes.
Yes.
Like anything else?
Yeah, we order them in bulk every year, and then the guys replace them.
Okay.
Uh, I just want to thank the DPW too, 'cause I, I did get phone calls about the replacement, um, and or emptying of those for which they are doing so, so, thanks to Bill and the team for making that happen.
Uh, so I'm making, um, an amendment to the entertainment for Fourth of July. Our, um, Elvis this year is in jail.
Is female, is that what you said?
So I had to get another one.
Cool, I approve.
So this is four hundred and fifty dollars more on the DDA entertainment for Fourth of July.
She's a woman, she's worth it.
No, just to clarify, she said, uh, he's in jail.
He's in jail.
Oh, my God. Sorry.
He was a partying Elvis.
Glad we cleared that out.
That was a girl Elvis.
Almost left the house.
Well, I just wanted to make you aware of the price.
So it's a.
Four hundred and fifty dollars.
Alrighty then.
Um, okay.
So Tammy, given the circumstances of the prior individual living in jail, uh, we are going to incur an additional expense. Obviously, it's been very well received to have Elvis at the community for the festivities. Tammy's looking for a motion to approve that incremental adjustment.
Motion to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried.
Thank you. Also, so far this year for Music in the Park, I have sixteen hundred and fifty dollars in donations so far for that.
That's incredible.
Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you, Tammy, and the Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, given the, uh, motion at the, uh, opening around the agenda, Vince, I'm gonna pass it over to you for the added item E.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this morning, uh, just, uh, the, Mayor and I have been working on a, uh, what's called a congressional, uh, directed spending. Uh, they ask, uh, um, communities, uh, Congresswoman Dingell, as well as Senator Peters' office, had reached out. And this resolution is, uh, in support of, uh, the replacement of the, uh, bridge on Gibraltar, crossing the, the Frank and Poet Drain. Uh, the estimated cost for that replacement is, uh, three million dollars. We're requesting, uh, uh, two point four million. There's a expectation with this request of a local match, of which those funds would be local. Talking with, um, Amy, uh, our finance director, uh, we would probably find some of the funds in our major street funds, but there may be some DDA funds, uh, to go toward that. It's a critical, uh, piece of infrastructure between, obviously, between I seventy-five and the core of the town, you know, benefiting residents, uh, businesses, as well as visitors. And so we're asking for this resolution of support that would, uh, accompany the, the request that, that we are, we have submitted as of this afternoon, uh, to Senator Peters' office. The bridge itself was, uh, rated, uh, poor dash critical. Uh, it's, it's ninety-two years old and in, in, in poor shape, and, uh, clearly, you don't want it closed because of its structural, uh, deficiency. So this would be, hopefully, a way to secure, uh, some funding for, for this piece of infrastructure.
I just want, I just want to sincerely thank Vince, uh, obviously more broadly, for his partnership in this interim manager role, but, uh, for his thoroughness in this, um, in approaching this. Obviously, just a couple of their kind of backdrops that I think everybody should be aware of. You know, we have our Infrastructure Advisory Committee, for which we talked about priorities for infrastructure. Uh, we've had discussions with our council members and experts in the community. Uh, and we've submitted, uh, budget requests for Camilleri's office, Church's office. I have, uh, lunch with Congresswoman Dingell on April third, for which that will be a priority topic. Um, and obviously, with Senator Peters, this will be critical to have this resolution and hopefully, support financially for that bridge project. As Vince emphasizes, this is one of two major inroads to the city of Gibraltar. Uh, anything that were to happen to that poor, critical condition bridge would be a very big impact for our city, so the funding would be very greatly appreciated. And, uh, obviously, this is coming out of the last council meeting, for those that were watching, for which we found out that we were granted one million dollars, uh, based on a call from Congresswoman Dingell and support from Senator Peters historically. So, very grateful for the money coming in, very grateful for the two water main projects and sewer lining activities that are happening recently. And this would be a critical funding request, uh, for that bridge. So Vince, thanks for making it happen, and your thoroughness in doing so.
So is this the, is twenty, is two million four hundred thousand the cap that we can ask from the CDS?
Yes, I, that's the part we're recommending, uh, we have an estimated cost of three million dollars, and twenty percent, uh, is kind of a, a typical expectation of a local match for a, a major infrastructure project like this.
So then the six hundred K would come from either like the.
Major street fund, uh, uh, you know, Amy and I looked at that, uh, it has enough, uh, fund equity in it, as well as we may approach, uh, the DDA, uh, you know, with some funding if that's, uh, uh, necessary as well. We just figured locally, we'll find a way to scrape it together to.
So it could be some sum from a major street.
It could be general fund, too.
But it could be some funding from somewhere.
Exactly.
The major street fund, and then some subset of funding potentially from DDA.
Who estimated the cost of the three million?
Well, that's a good question, uh, I saw the number when I got here and, and was kind of looking around. Interestingly enough, uh, on one of the grants, uh, at the state level, I was looking at some projects, uh, that were approved by the Metro District, uh, at, uh, MDOT. And I go, okay, you just kind of do an eyeball engineering, and you go, yeah, that probably is a good number to get you in the ballpark. Uh, but I didn't find the, the level of detail that I would have preferred to see related to, you know, all the design, environmental surveying work that typically go with the detail on the front end, as well as the construction detail, the demolition, and, and even the construction, uh, management that is a part of the, the, the project, so.
So is there a risk to us to have to fund, we could go one point two million instead of six hundred thousand cost? Our cost could be one point two million instead of six hundred thousand, based on the. Our cost could be 1.2 million instead of 600,000, based on the estimate we have.
Well, at that point in time, then, there's going to have to be some, some more thought to it. I, I will tell you, it's, it's probably, if I'm, if I, based on what I'm looking at, I think the 3 million is a high number.
So it could be less.
Think about, you know, and it's, I know it's a controversial aspect of it, but the Horse Island Bridge, the grant that was received was 2.9 million, and I'm thinking that is a lot more complicated project than this one, because it's not a very big span. It's crossing just a fairly, you know, not a real wide drain, and, and so I think I probably am comfortable, and again, looking at other projects that have been funded in 2023.
What was the cost of the bridge they put in over here last year?
That I don't know. We were talking about it this afternoon.
We've been researching all the files we possibly can to triangulate a number.
Jesus.
Well, and the, is the weight, is the wake limit of the Middle Gibraltar Frank and Poet Bridge more than the bridge here and the Horse Island Bridge? The capacity would have to be more, right, because of the travel?
I think more, there's going to be a little more truck traffic, certainly the end uses on each end, but I don't see that being necessarily, you know, a high cost. The span itself is much, much shorter than, than what you have with the bridge here.
That's, I was just curious for an estimate of what that one was.
Yeah.
To say you're safe.
And I, and I think the submission is critical. I think the, I, I sent a note to Senator Peters today, requesting a, a meeting and a follow-up discussion related to the requests we are submitting. So we're really trying to full-court press, all parties involved, all offices, to have follow-up discussions, so we're not just submitting in isolation, we're submitting within a meeting to discuss specifics, with the interest of having as much push as possible.
And it was due today, so.
Could we make a motion with the request that if the forecasted spend is over 3 million, we have to come back to discuss?
Well, it's actually a council request. You know, we're just asking you to support the project in, in general.
So, so Vince, maybe that's a, a piece of color that's important. In this senator's submission request, they ask, Vince, you can maybe share, they ask for advocacy or letters of support.
Right, right.
So they're coming to you with the letter of support, right?
Yeah.
Request on the resolution. We also included other parties in that.
Yep, there's others.
Well, obviously, we would support the project.
Yep. There's no commitment at, at this point anywhere with the DDA, other than it just acknowledges it would be a benefit to ensure that there is a reliable bridge crossing there for the benefit of.
Everyone.
Yeah.
Is there a timeframe, the spend of funding, when we receive it, if we receive it?
It's, the, the question they had on there is, would you need more money beyond 25? Now, their fiscal year 25 starts October 1. I, you could easily, it's not going to be one of those projects that's going to last a long time. I just don't see it as a very complicated project.
It'd be done in late '24, '25.
Yeah.
Early '25.
I really love the questions, though, so maybe even a conditional motion, obviously with the support of the project, but conditional on, you know, funding available.
Funding, yeah.
And accurate estimates.
We need accurate estimates.
So you'd be looking for action from?
Yeah, just, just, I'm requesting a motion to approve the resolution of support for the, the project that was submitted to Senator Peters' office for funding.
Make a motion.
So moved.
So moved, and is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Thank you, Commission, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Great questions that we will deep dive on continuously.
More information, as we have time to dig into it further, they said we had to get this thing out the door today was the deadline, and, you know, many of the questions you had were the same questions I wish I had just another day to figure out, but I certainly appreciate your support on short notice.
Thank you, Vince, again. Thank you, Commission. That would conclude items A through E in our new business. Vince, I'll pass it back over to you for any DDA Director report.
I don't really have anything at this point in time to, to add.
How's life in the interim manager role?
Today, it was interesting. Mostly because I had a hockey game to go to and my, gave it to my son, and we couldn't transfer the tickets to a friend, and that was why I was a little.
So nothing to do with us.
Nothing to do with, no, no.
So it was like an eight out of 10?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was eight out of 10.
Let's go right wings.
Yeah.
Vince, anything else for you, or any questions for Vince?
No.
You know, I, if I, if I may.
Yeah, please.
I'm not sure if it's went into much detail, but, you know, you did the bond issue for the water project and the bond issue that went with it was large and clearly didn't spend all the money, and so the mayor kind of alluded to it with the infrastructure committee that was formed and has had a couple of meetings, but at some point, there'll be a discussion about what to use with some of that surplus bond proceeds that were not spent with the project, and it's probably in the order of about $700,000, which is a lot. And so there'll be some more dialogue with, you know, it's certainly probably be incorporated into the budget with projects that would have to be, and I guess we have to also look at.
There's the money for the bridge.
I was just going to say.
Well, there could be, but also, but, and the transition, when I said that, is that you actually have to have it in your plan, so you may have to do a plan amendment if there's something that, expending that would have to go to be eligible for it, so. Those are the things, the discussions that will be coming forth.
Are there certain, also, could you, are there certain requirements of things you can and cannot use that money for that we should lay out so that?
Yeah, I mean, it, it has to be infrastructure, can't be programmatic or anything of that nature, but, you know, again, it's a detail of looking at what, and I think you recently amended your plan, DDA plan, but in the last couple of years, so what projects were identified in there is really where the eligibility is, and if there's something outside that you would have to come back and.
The kitchen sink is in that.
Is it? Okay.
We're good.
Okay, we're good.
There you go.